Okay. Welcome to the budget meeting for May 26, 2015. Tonight we'll be covering revenues, county tax, general assistance, and education. And with all that being said, we will begin at the beginning at revenues.
You all have a copy of estimated revenues.
You all have a copy of estimated revenues that the town anticipates receiving in the coming year in addition to property tax items.
Excuse me, so is this in the same packet of the expense lines, or was it in something separate?
It was in something separate, but I just happen to have extra, in case anyone didn't have.
We'll take ten or twelve down this way.
There's, there's, yes, it is. There's only, there's not that many of you. You're welcome. So, anyway, these are revenues that the town receives apart from property tax that we budget to offset the amount needed to be raised by taxation. And all of these line items, all of these various items, some are fees, some are excise, some are use of reserves, there's the whole laundry list. And what this does is come off the bottom line of your budget so that what is left becomes your property tax commitment. And things like tax interest and lien interest, those are revenues paid by property taxpayers who pay their bills late. And, and we estimate revenues from them for that and budget that. Motive vehicle excise was estimated last year at 1.55 million, and this year I'm estimating it 1.6. We've seen an uptick over two years in that, so that's gone up a bit. Boat excise is self-explanatory. Agent fees are the, are the amount of money per transaction that the town receives for motive vehicle registrations and those kind of things. Clerk fees are the, are the funds that the town receives for transactions that are related to the clerk, marriage license fees, our share of vital records fees, all those kind of fees. Interest is what we get from, interest on our checking account, which is practically nothing, generally speaking, because interest rates are extremely low, number one, and we're now working on a, much closer to the bone in terms of what we have available in reserves, so it gets spent down and then comes back up when the taxes are paid, but it doesn't leave much for gaining interest. Rental income of $2,000 is the amount that we get annually for the post office lot next door. Code enforcement officer fees are the fees that are received from people who are applying to get a permit for the town from, for something related to building in Hampden. Yes, Terry?
I didn't catch until after you moved on, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So the rental income is for, somebody rents the property that the building sits on from the town?
That's correct.
Who owns, who owns the building and leases that? Who?
That, that post office lease is to a Paul Lassard, no relation to me. He was, had that lease long before I came here, who was out of Lewiston, and it's, it is, he leases that land and he then leases it to the post office, but the town's amount of rental income annually is $2,000.
Is that by contract or something? How long of a contract was-
Ten years.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sue, where do you, where do you reflect the whole three dollars we get from? The other buildings we rent out, lease out?
That's miscellaneous income.
Okay.
Plumbing fees are the amounts that the town receives, again, when we do plumbing. We will be back up to getting more of those in the coming year because we now have our own licensed plumbing inspector. What we have been doing is having someone else do it, but then they get the fees associated with it at cost. And now that Miles is certified or about to be certified in that, we'll be able to retain those fees for the town. So that will be better. Planning board-
Can I, can I just ask all that? Did those fees basically, so we're not having that master plumber do the inspection? We won't?
We will be having our own licensed plumbing inspector, yes.
But what I'm questioning is, in the past here, did those fees basically pay for his doing it? So we didn't retain?
That's right. I mean, we, it was a, we paid him out.
So now those fees-
Would stay here.
Theoretically will help pay for the code enforcement officers.
Yes, and that's what, that's what happened when Ben Johnson was our code officer. He was also an LPI, and the town retained all of those, not the state's share, but the local share, the town retained those as an offset.
Correct.
The planning board fees are, are fees that are paid for, by site developers or those kind of things that are for larger projects that the town retains. Cable TV fee, that is the 3% franchise fee that I talked to you about earlier. Fees and permits are miscellaneous. There are things like yard sale permits and those kind of things. We are not budgeting any more from host community benefit revenue as a general budget offset. What says the housing foundation, that is, are, those are the service fees associated with the, the group homes that we have here in Hampden that are not required to pay property taxes, but the town has a service fee ordinance that has a formula that calculates what they pay as a fee in lieu of property taxes for, and that, and that is what that is.
Sue, can I just step back-
Sure.
-for a couple fees and permits?
Yep.
And this year, we've received $275 to date supposedly, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
And you figured $1,000? But the year before, we received seven, almost $7,400. Why so much that year?
That was an anomaly, and I'll have to go back and see what it was that we received that was, had no other place to go as a revenue. It apparently wasn't an anticipated one, and what that may have been, I, I would prefer to check it rather than speak.
Okay.
But, but that's, that was an anomaly.
Just a huge amount compared to the previous.
Absolutely. Most everything else has a specific location. That one I will check on.
Code enforcement fees did the exact same thing.
Code enforcement, that, I can tell you what that is. That's Chickadee Crossing. That's 32, or however many units there are in there, and that, that was a substantial fee project. That's, I, I, you can pick when we get some of these bigger ones, it impacts things along those lines. Okay. Sewer income is the amount that the town receives from the sewer fund to offset the costs of billing, flushing the lines, doing all those kind of things. That, that amount of revenue comes from sewer users for that. Miscellaneous is just that, things that come in that, that may not have another specific line item that we put them, it's not a big amount.
Sue, did we do business park?
We, there's, there's nothing under the business park.
I, I see that, I'm just-
There, once upon a time, when the town, before the town made an agreement with sergeants, the town used to estimate an amount of revenue as if it would sell a lot. And since we're not doing that anymore, there's no estimate of that as a revenue. Tree growth is the amount that the state reimburses us for the tree growth, the land in Hampden that's in tree growth. And when you see something that's a bit bigger, it, it may be because someone has withdrawn land from tree growth, and there's a penalty associated with some of that. So, veterans reimbursement, again, that's a state reimbursement for lost taxes due to the veterans exemptions that we have as part of our, that are granted as part of our assessing process. General assistance reimbursement, we are reimbursed under the current formula, up to 50% of what we expend. And we budget 50% of what we budget for an expense. So we budgeted $10,000 as an expense, I believe, for general assistance this year, and therefore we've budgeted $5,000 as an offset to that. If we only spend $5,000, then we would only get $2,500 back, but it's, it's okay because we didn't spend all of it either. That's a direct, that's a state feed program. State revenue sharing, $348,000 is the estimate for this year and for next year. That, that is an estimate, because when the state does better, where it's a percentage base of, that comes in. So, 348 is the, is the conservative guess. Hopefully it'll be a little bit more, but I wouldn't dare to budget that way. Fund balance at $200,000 is half of what before, but I explained why I had reduced that, that we have spent down our fund balance to the point where if we, if we put more than that in, we're going to be borrowing in anticipation of taxes in order to pay the town's bills. And that's not recommended. Animal control fee, the $1,000 is, is an estimate on what the town may get back for having, for the fees associated with recovering animals or fines or those kind of things that we get back. Ambulance fees are the fees we get from operating our ambulance service that's billed out by Bangor Fire. But those are, are what's estimated to receive. Police receipts are accident reports, those kind of things that are, yes.
Sue, I know I've a number of years been here, and I've asked, why, why does Bangor handle our ambulance fee billing out? There was a reason?
There is a reason. We don't have anyone trained in-house in all of this various and sundry parameters of insurance billing for, which changes with all the coding and stuff on an ongoing basis. Once upon a time, the town only billed insurance companies. And then Medicare didn't like that at all, and that's when we did it ourself. And so, we had to go, you have to bill everyone. And Bangor Fire, for $12 per run, does all of our billing, and they don't just send one bill. It's, it's three bills in, in the process, as far as we go with it. It is much less expensive, and we're one of, a number of communities for which they bill. They have staff who is trained in order to be, we can't do it more cheaply than that in terms of keeping someone trained and up to date on what has to be done for all the various kind of insurance billing.
So does our ambulance service notify them, or someone in the office here notify them that there was a run?
All of the calls go to, all of the run sheets from every call goes to Bangor Fire.
Through Bangor.
And then when the payments come back in, you know, the, to, because we have to, for audit purposes, we have to make, have a, a list of receivables that is audited by, as part of our, that, that receivables list is maintained by Rosemary.
That's probably not something you want to look at changing anyway, because the complexities, complexities behind that, to know, for one, where to send those bills to, so they do get paid, it's enormous.
They're getting them, we went to this because, as I said, it's a, it's the best $12 we spend in this, in this process, because trying to have that done consistently in-house for, just given the rule changes with health insurance and, and what gets covered and what doesn't is huge. And the other thing is, it keeps us in compliance for billing purposes with the insurance entities that if we don't bill correctly and don't bill everybody and aren't consistent, we can be in major issues with Medicare especially.
I got a quick question on, you said that Rosemary maintains a receivables.
Yes.
How do we treat the non-paying side of it? What, what happens to that number at the end of the year?
Every two years, you write them off. Well, I won't say that.
Right.
Every two years, you get a list of ambulance bills that have been through the entire process that Hampden puts them through, and you decide whether or not to write them off. The, because every two years, we're required by the auditor to have perfected our list, because after a certain period of time, if you're not doing more extensive collection than sending them three bills, they're no longer collectible and they're no longer part of your asset bottom line. So we have to, the council has traditionally, every couple of years, goes through and, I can't think of the right word right this minute, but they, in effect, abate those, you know, they come off the receivables, so that they're no longer due.
What, what effect does it have on the town's finances while they are on the books? I mean, does that have any effect as a, you know?
No, because the, the amount of, of that on an ongoing basis is not, you know, it's 50 or 60, $70,000, it's not a million. And the, the, the numbers that are more than 18 months old, which is generally where you get to it being considered uncollectible, are a percentage of that. We have, every couple of years, abated 20 or $30,000 worth of those, just to bring the list into the realistic collectible line item. So it doesn't, it has no effect on our overall financial health, but for the purposes of audit, for us to be seen as being in compliance, that we have to also maintain that list in a real-time kind of what's really collectible. So if you were to look at the bottom line and, at any given time, there's about $30,000 in ambulance receivables that we're not going to get.
Has the town ever discussed possibly going after these a little more aggressively, or is it just a matter of?
No, we've talked about, this has been a, a discussion in my almost 15 years that's been, had at least three or four times, where different councils have talked about whether or not pursuing for an ambulance claim beyond the, the normal billings is where they want to go. And to, to this point, counselors' bigger concerns have been that they do not ever want someone in Hampden to not pick up the phone and dial 911, or call for an ambulance if they need one, because they're afraid that they can't afford the bill.
Right.
When we are, property taxes are supporting the fire department, EMS department, to the tune of a million dollars a year. So, that has, that has been the question. Other communities do pursue collection and that kind of thing, but the biggest reason that's always been given is that, that counselors haven't wanted people to not, who are, from Hampden, who are, would not feel that they couldn't call the ambulance if they needed it because of money.
Thank you.
Police receipts, I think I said that, that's accident reports, those kind of things. DEA and school reimbursement. What that is, is the town has one police officer position that is assigned to the DEA. The DEA pays 100% of the cost of that officer and all of their benefits, everything. And that's, we pay the officer, but we are reimbursed for 100% of that cost. And the other thing that, is that the school, prior to this year, paid $30,000 a year for the, toward the cost of the high school school resource officer. And the council at your planning session this year asked that we, that I contact the school about paying for the total cost of the school resource officer while he was in that position, which I did, and which they agreed to do, which gave us an additional almost $37,000 in revenue, which is reflected in this line item to offset that cost. Cemetery fees and cemetery sale, lot sales are the amounts that we receive when people buy graves and the care associated with them. Cemetery reserve use is what we take out of the cemetery reserve account on it in order to offset the taxation cost towards the maintenance of cemeteries. Transfer station permit income is the amount of money that we get back for selling transfer station decals at the. Recycling income is primarily metal now, that, because we have zero sort, we no longer are, are getting money back from the rest of them, but we're also saving money through other matters with that. But the recycling income is primarily metal.
Sue, can we take one step back again?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Please. Transfer station permits.
Yep.
Why last year did we receive $60,000? And then this year, we're figuring only $45,000 when the fee doubled?
Well, last year, we, if you remember, we made an error in the budget. There, we budgeted too much, we had budgeted like there were going to be $20 instead of $10.
Okay, we didn't receive 60.
No, 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 that was the estimate-
Estimate, okay.
-on it, yes, that's why. Perk revenue is the amount of money that we get, the town's tipping fee to the perk facility is billed at current rates, which is in the mid $70 range right now. However, the town has a contract through the municipal review committee with perk that our guaranteed price is around $50 a ton. So every quarter, we get a reimbursement check from the municipal review committee for the difference between the actual price we paid and that guaranteed rate that there was. And that amount is going to be approximately $85,000 in this coming year. And what that does is, that is an offset to the cost of running the transfer station, because your transfer station budget includes the price of paying it in real time, not as, at the reduced rate.
Is that guaranteed rate good through 2018?
2018, yes. It, it was $45 a ton, and the municipal review committee moved that up to around 50 or 51 at the moment. It's going up a little bit more as we get closer to 2018, but it's still dramatically less than what the actual cost per ton is at perk. Library fees are just that, late books, don't, small donations, all of those kind of things that the library generates in terms of fees. Pool fees are no longer listed because they're outside of the, they're not used to offset anything within the operating budget. Reserve fund use is for things like, this past year, we used money to, or estimated that we're going to use money to do the floor and do other things like that. You see the transit bonus that's blank? That's the bus, or was the bus, but it's not anymore. And carried balances, the $100,000 is, are the accounts that we talked about, such as police and fire, that we feed reserve accounts from, that, so that we don't have to budget other money in, in order to do that. And those are all the things that come off your taxation, which is $3,35,500. And it's less than last year because of the reduction in the fund balance item, primarily because some other things went up. However, the difference between this, the reduction in the budget overall, and the increase in valuation washes itself out, so that the town still, as, as it sits right now, is not looking at a property tax increase for this year. Those are the revenues.
Any further questions? Okay. Let's say we move on to county tax.
The county tax is a bill, and this year's county tax is $768,555. Last year was $751,929. We're the third highest community in Penobscot County, the third highest county tax, because we're the third highest valued community in Penobscot County. Bangor Brewer Hampden is, and the county tax is based on our share of county valuation entirely. And as I said, we're third, that's why our bill is, is, is as high as, as it is.
Just what is it the county does for us that merits paying them incredible amounts of money?
Well, the law requires it.
I mean, yeah, but I mean, other than that, what do they actually do for us?
But the jail, the jail is part of it, the registry of deeds is part of it, the sheriff's department, even though we have our own, they're available to us for backup if necessary. Probate, the court system, the, all of the things that the county does that impacts, a lot of it has to do with public safety, but it also includes dispatch. Our dispatch is operated through the county as a general. We used to get a separate bill for dispatch, we no longer do that. The county, it has absorbed it overall so that we get that. But again, registry of deeds, the jail, the district attorney's office, I, there are any number of the departments, but, and then, you know, based on our share of the county's valuation, we end up with a mill rate for the county tax.
Because if you compare that to just the, the budget for the town, to operate the town itself, which is what, four or five million bucks? And we're giving the county, you know, 20% of that? Or almost 20, actually more than, yeah, about 20%, to do administrative functions for us, basically?
Well, the, the, the big problem is the jail. I won't say the big problem, the, there's a big, there's a day of reckoning coming, shall we say, in the cost of the jail operation, which has been, the state did some things with it, but it appears that it's going to come home to roost eventually, because they're running it a deficit and they're overpopulated, and the county is where the, I think the rubber's going to meet the road in terms of how that has to be. So my concern- the road in terms of how that has to be. So my concern with the county is, they, is that if the, if those jail costs get reapportioned in a major way, that is huge, based on what they have to do. And it's been somewhat mitigated for the past several years while the state has been doing this capping of their expenses. But since the corrections board is now basically defunct and the jails are running in the red, that this is, $16,000 is a small increase compared to what it could be if that really becomes an issue.
But eventually, it probably is going to come to roost.
I don't know how it's going to avoid it unless the state does something different than they're doing.
Well, politically, it's gonna, it's gonna be thrashed out at a state level as well. Federal COLA this year is, I think, 1.7%. Does that sound right to anybody? And I just did old fashioned math, and this is 2.2, so it's, it's not a whole lot more than, than the COLA.
It's just a big number.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions? Okay, next item would be general assistance.
General assistance, we budgeted $10,000. Through the end of March, we'd spent $2,300 this year in general assistance. I don't think we've spent another thousand since then. The parameters for the award of general assistance are so minimalistic that the income, if your income is more than 500 and change for, for one person, you're not eligible for the program. $700 for two people. The, there's very little housing available in Hamden where people with income that is, are in that or below that could find housing. And, and that's the one big difference between us and Bangor, or us and many communities that have a lot of rental property, or a lot of, of those kind of things. So the last estimate, I think, based on the size of our community, was that our, we could reasonably assume a general assistance budget of $175,000, that we would be reimbursed 50% of, of a general assistance budget up to $175,000. And we've never spent 10 in a year. And it, but again, it's, it's entirely because our costs are shifted to someplace that has housing available for people to live in that might qualify for this program. We, we just don't have it.
Council, Marble.
Well, just, just to put it in perspective, Bangor will spend between one and a half and two million this year, I think, in GA. And the reimbursement rates are going down. And state policy changes, like with who's eligible or not eligible for Medicaid, affect that directly, because someone may have a legal right to a prescription and meet qualifications for GA and no longer get it through federal insurance, but at the local and state level. $10,000 a year is kind of equal to $10,000 a month in Bangor for prescriptions only. So I think we're very fortunate. And I think, I think Bangor as a service center shoulders a lot for the whole surrounding area.
For these, for, definitely for that. There's many things that, that there, the service center communities pick up that we don't, but that, that is one budget that is. And it, it's a, it's a program of rules. And Cheryl Johnson does an exceptional job of making sure that people follow the rules. It's not about being nice or being not nice or anything, but there, there are rules. And, and she, she verifies information, and she makes sure that if somebody's eligible, that's fine, but if they're not, they're not. So again, it's a small budget.
Any other questions? Okay, the next item, education.
That's another big number. That is, oh dear, here we go. $6,130,574. That's up $97,000 and change over last year. But if you look at the two prior years, you'll see that the two prior years were six-digit increases that didn't start with one. And when you look at the two prior years and the mill rate increases, it's directly related. This year, the $97,000 is first offset by the additional almost $37,000 in income that they're providing to the town for the remainder of their school resource officer costs. That, that's a big thing. So it brings the net increase from the school prior to their meeting. That, this is an estimate. The budget, the school budget meeting has yet to be held. That's going to be held on. On the fourth. And at that meeting, it can, people can add to the budget, and then it will be voted on after. So this is what the school board has presented, and I truly hope that it remains the budget that they move forward with, because if this number changes dramatically, last year, it changed by $150,000 on the floor of the meeting, and 63% of that was ours. So it's, it's not within our control, but this is the number right this minute for what they've proposed, which I am in hopes stays the way it is. It's what allows us, I mean, we've still reduced our budget overall apart from this, but the, this number is the, the one that right up till June 4th, or actually the validation vote beyond it, has the most potential to, all of our planning can be kicked right in the nose if this number goes up by $100,000. Then, then you have a whole lot, lot of other different choices to make about what we do here. And hopefully, we don't have to do that. We've done that for many years now, but it would, this year, I am in hopes that we can go back to the no mill rate increase that we did for six years in a row, getting back in that pattern. So we'll see. That's the number. That's the estimate. The actual number will be after the fourth, and then after the validation vote beyond that. So.
Just for clarification, when the school has their final meeting, and I understand this is an estimated budget, if they come back with a budget that's a quarter of a million higher, we don't necessarily have to accept that budget.
Absolutely, you do.
We do.
It's a bill. We are one member of the RSU. And if, and I'll say this, God forbid, somebody added a quarter of a million dollars to the school budget on the floor of the meeting, and enough people were there to adopt it, and then it was, the voting approved that, 63% of that quarter of a million dollars would appear in this line item right here with nothing that you could do. You're legally bound as a member of the RSU to pay that. So if on June whatever, that were to happen, that's what happens.
Okay, so, and I picked that number for a reason. So if they did a quarter million dollars worth of increases over there, that would wipe out our savings that we have projected at $130,000 reduction in the overall budget.
That's correct.
So I certainly don't want to see the school budget come back that way, but I think we've done a really good job as a council and as the town manager, working together to really keep the taxes down this year.
Well, it, that, that's the, that is, that is the hope. I, I think it's fair to say that the school administration also recognizes the past two years have been dramatically.
Brutal.
Well, that's a good word. Because before that, if it was, it was always sort of, if it was $100,000 or left, less, we can somehow manage this, because we absorb most of it through growth and valuation. But when you more than triple or quadruple that amount, then you can't catch that number, because the amount that the town uses for taxes is smaller, or, or, you know, a smaller piece of the tax dollar than what the RSU uses for the tax, of the tax dollar. But I, I'm not, I haven't heard anything brewing. I, I don't know that there's anything, there wasn't a lot of discussion during their budget, it's my understanding, you know, and, and so I'm in hopes that it stays stable and that we're able to maintain this. I'll be going to the budget meeting. I go, I would encourage everyone to go. The $150,000 item last year, one vote. One vote would have made a difference in how that went.
Can you send an email out to the councilors?
Reminding.
When and what time that budget is going, or that budget here is.
It's a, it's an open meeting, and it's next Thursday.
The district budget meeting is at 7 o'clock on Thursday, the 4th. And then at, at that meeting, the budget will be adopted. Then it goes to the voters on Tuesday, June 9th, to be approved as it was adopted at the meeting.
Thank you very much. I think it's imperative that at least many of us attend that meeting.
Well, Sue, you said one vote. You mean by the school board?
No.
By the public?
I mean by, on the floor.
Oh, okay.
You know, the, a motion was made, a, you know, it.
Show of hands?
A show of hands. I was there.
A one-line editorial comment. This is, this is why it really matters that the citizens of this town and this RSU get involved and to just, just get involved in these activities. You can't have a vote with a room of 22 people in it deciding a multimillion dollar budget for a three-community RSU. I mean, it's just, it's not a good representative democratic process.
Well, the, the fact, there were more people than that in the room, but, and it's validated by voters afterwards, and it was validated two to one. I, I mean, people voted in a, in the ballot box afterwards to ratify it. I spoke at that meeting, and I did not speak against the school. I, I just said, I would ask that you respect the school boards. It's already a big number. It was already 300 and some thousand. You know, it, it went to four after that for us. But the consequences of, of those actions aren't seen as a school responsibility, because they don't send the tax bill. We do. And so we have exceptional education. I think that, that the school board, and they, they've worked hard to minimize it this year, recognizing that what's happened over the past couple. But, you know, they're also at the, whatever they get from the state, you know, those appropriations for them are change. We're all, we're all, we all have our hand in the same pocketbook. And that's, you know, the state provides, whoever provides, but whatever isn't provided that's seen as necessary comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. And since we're the ones with their names on the bill, that's how it gets translated. But I think it's fair to say that Hamden has certainly supported education, and it supports good community services. And I, I think the council is trying hard to do that in a way that is as cost effective as it can be. Certainly, I don't think you see very many other communities around that are talking about no mill rate increase. I think that you see they're talking service reductions, or they're talking an, an increase. That's what they're seeing, so. Sorry.
Any more questions? Okay, well, last one would be just the budget review.
Oops. And I don't have it here. I'm gonna have to do it on, this is, the only one that you haven't seen the final number is the TIF. And the TIF is, is what is generated by the agreements we have. So it's a legal, legally required number that's funded from its own revenues. So that's, that one. And then there was a. A, what's that? Yeah, that was an estimate, but, but the, whatever the final impact, the revenue offsets the, any increase in that number. The, what was I gonna say? Because the other ones are outside of, the Ameritif, and those are outside the consideration of valuation, et cetera. They're not part of that. The, on, on Monday, the 1st, at finance, Medavision will be here to explain the health insurance plan that I am hoping that you'll approve, that will allow us to have reduced our things. Counselor, Marble had asked about retirement and, and those kind of things. I have a sheet that shows everything by department that is for each benefit category. As far as this current budget, I, I'm not sure that there's something that, that would or should be done in terms of, if the council is looking at changing, moving forward in the future, some, many communities, many companies and some, I think, have changed policies. Will say that the current, from X on, retirement is no longer at X, it's at Y. There, it, there becomes two levels. I think Council Ri, Mayor Ryder has talked about those kind of things. And if those kind of policy changes that you want to look at, perhaps in implementing, that that would be a subject for finance and administration to look at in, in terms of moving forward in that way. I think the change in health insurance is going to be major in this year, in terms of cost savings, and that will move forward with you. That, that savings isn't going to be a blip on the radar. It's gonna continue to keep it level, a more level number. But if you're looking over time to reduce your retirement obligation, I, I won't say obligation, if you're, because many of these are money purchase, your obligation's done when you, every week when somebody gets paid. But if you want to look to change that, then that would be a discussion that you would have in finance, and that I would hope was a thoughtful one in terms of how we got to where we are, and what that's been an offset for in the past.
For, for the record and for assurances, I don't think anyone in this council is looking to negatively and dramatically affect any employees' benefits, whether it's health insurance or retirement. It's just part of a review of what are we doing? What has the practice been? Is that practice equal to the current norm in the business world today? Is there a more creative way we can do this? Is there something that's going to benefit the employee that doesn't cost the town more? And that's just part of the process. It wasn't a clear attempt to come in and say, well, we're going to save X percent by a reduction. That was not the intention in that.
Yeah. Well, that, that in looking how to, there are other ways that other communities apportion benefits. Point systems that can be used towards health insurance, or towards retirement, or towards whatever. The big ticket moving piece that you're sort of, has been health insurance. And sort of wrestling that one first, and then moving towards some of the other ones, I think, would be a, a good place to start. In, in this year's budget, it's a big help for us. And I think that moving forward, the creative thing, this health insurance is a creative solution to this issue that.
I think the health insurance and what we've been able to do, or what you've been able to find for us this year, there's a good indication of what, as a council, we're trying to accomplish here. We're not trying to slash positions and slash benefits and, and make it really, really tough on folks. It's just not the way that, even in the business world, that we would want to do things. But to mirror what, what Dennis is saying here, we just wanted to be able to take a look at it and see if there is alternatives out there that would still keep benefits. at it and see if there is alternatives out there that would still keep benefits attractive, but also doing our obligation to the citizens of Hamden. So, I think we can move forward and, and come up with something productive. And if we can't, we can't, you know? So, we're just, we'll look somewhere else then.
I, I think it's fair to say that the employees have always been supportive in trying to help the town maintain its, it, it did what other communities didn't in terms of opening contracts and in doing things that have helped the town over the long, picked up other things, you know? Everything from Joe Dunton doing the mechanic work on the ambulances and those kind of things. Every, every time we pick up one more thing like that or do that, it saves the residents of the community money, and that's under the radar stuff. People, that's, that's not on the front page of the paper because it isn't something idiotic, you know? If it was some idiot thing, it would be all over the news. But the fact that on a routine basis, we're looking at what we can do to do it more cost-effectively just doesn't make the news that way.
The other thing I'd like to see as far as process going forward is that it, it's an open process. It's, it's communicated, and so that with, with and through the town manager, employees should never come to work going, oh, what the heck just happened that we didn't know about? So, if there are options to be considered or different ways to do things, that should be a dialogue through that process.
Yeah.
Are we all set?
So, what you will see on the 1st is a budget that is everything that we've already talked about. The only thing that is not the way is, is the bus is hanging out there. I didn't budget for it to be Saturday service at the number I estimated Saturday service to be based on the information that was provided.
I did have a suggestion on that. With the Saturday bus service, I don't know if we have real numbers from either side, to be honest with you. One side says, or last year, $30,000 or $28,000 we'd save. This year, it's $16,000 we'd save. For $16,000, it doesn't seem like a huge, huge debate, or shouldn't be a huge debate. But we did, if people remember, or those of, of the Hamden citizens that have been tuning in all the way through this, we left $40,000 in one of our departments in case we wanted to add a part-time person if we needed it. But I checked, and may, I may be wrong about this, but I think Dean Bennett was the person that did the TIF or helped us with the TIF. If we absolutely needed a staff member, that could be covered by that TIF money, if I remember correctly. So, if we absolutely have to have the bus service or we need to make a decision for the bus or the budget going forward, we can keep that in there for the Saturday service, but we can take the 40 away from the buffer for a possible part-time person, and we actually end up saving an additional $10,000 anyway that way.
You, you would, the bus would be at, the way I budgeted based on the number we had is $28,000. There's $5,000 included that was put in under outside agencies, and that was only put there because it was panquish in case the town decided to contract with that. So, it's down to $23,000. That's, that's part of your bottom-line number. So, if you didn't do that, then it, then the, the difference is $23,000. The $40,000 was for the new manager and the council, should you determine personnel changes, it could be the planner, it could be, it could be whatever you want it to be. It's money so that you're not hamstrung with op, to have options for how you deal with whatever staffing issues you may think you have moving forward. That was what that was for. But the additional $23,000, if, if you wanted to use proceeds from, a legitimate use for some of the proceeds from a TIF is economic development staffing.
That's it.
Or, or whatever. But if you want, as an offset to the cost of your economic development director, if you wanted to kick $23,000 in that direction and fund the, and raise the bus, you've got an additional $23,000 in revenue that comes from a TIF to offset the economic development director. So, yes, that, that can be used.
I think, I think what I'm trying to point out here is that I think there's a way that we can satisfy everybody here, possibly, and that is one possible way, because the TIF money can be used for staffing and economic development, which is where we're earmarking that.
That's one of the uses that it can be used. If the council votes to do that, you can do that.
Right. So, it's not like if we take that 40 out of that line, that we absolutely can't put another staff member in there if we need it or we deem that it's necessary in six months. We could actually use the TIF money to take care of that. So, I mean, I don't know what everybody else on this council feels, but that seems to me like a very easy way to satisfy the savings that we want to have, and then maybe put the bus back on.
That doesn't satisfy me at all. That doesn't satisfy me even a tiny bit. First of all, there's not going to be enough TIF money this year or in the next few years to pay for anything. 20 grand, maybe next year it's 30 grand, and that's it. How are we gonna spend any TIF money on downtown development if there's no TIF money left? But getting back to the bus, I, I like it just the way it is. The money's not allocated. I still think that it should go away. I don't think there's any way to justify keeping it, no matter how you want to slice it and dice it and move money around or whatever. I just, you know, to be playing or to start changing allocations to make it look one way when reality is another, I, I just, I just don't see that as being feasible.
I, I don't think we're trying, or at least I'm not trying to make it look one way. I'm offering suggestions budget-wise. I'm talking numbers, sheer numbers, that's it.
Right, but the bottom line is, you're, you're still wanting to keep the bus in there.
I'm not saying I want to.
You just said that.
Counselor Marble?
I said there was a possibility of how to make everything go forward. That's all.
Just, I didn't know we were gonna do this tonight, but just a couple of comments. I mean, I'm gonna appreciate creative solutions from anybody at any time on this council with things we're trying to do. The part of Counselor McAvoy's statement I agree with in this case is that I think the, the cost of a service should be straightforward. The funding should be, should be mirroring the service. We'll disagree on whether or not we should do it, but I think he already knows that.
And I think it's, this is on the agenda for the finance on Monday night.
I just, I just want to say, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but TIF money, yeah, I'm on, TIF money cannot be used, I mean, it's for economic development per se, okay? But it cannot be used to hire, and I think that's what's the intent sort of, to hire a part-time planner. Am I right or wrong?
The, the funds can be used for economic development staff.
Right.
That, it would be used to offset Dean's salary, not...
Not the planner.
But, and I think what Counselor Wild was saying, that if that occurred, that frees up money that's already in the budget that could be used for the planning position.
Okay.
That's the way I interpreted it.
Any other questions?
That, that is correct, Sue. There was a way that we could do that without putting money in off to the side, not allocated at this time. So, it, there is a way to fund that. And I wasn't trying to make numbers look another way or a certain way, I'm just being very forthright and transparent, saying, hey, this is what we could do. The bus discussion is coming up next week anyway, so we'll finalize that one next week, of course. I did, I apologize, I didn't try to get the discussion going tonight on the bus, so.
Any other discussion? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much.